I would like to call the Monday, March 7th School Committee Meeting in session. Before we get into the routine matters, I would like to take a moment of silence to remember Ingrid Gaye, who passed away on February 17th. She was an art teacher in the Braintree Public Schools for the last 17 years. She taught at Liberty as well as Flaherty and had been also a teacher at Ross. So if you would, a moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much. Moving on to routine matters, approval of open session meetings minutes from February 7th, 2022. I have a motion or is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to communications and accommodations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it right over to Assistant Superintendent Courtney Miller.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lee. And Chairperson Heager, if we can advance a couple of sides. I am here tonight to talk to everybody about the Frederick Graham Award for Excellence in Teaching. So if you'll bear with me, I'd like to read all about the award and then let you know about an exciting recipient that we had in the Braintree Public Schools this year. The Frederick Graham Award for Excellence in Teaching History is presented annually to a middle or high school history teacher who has shown outstanding ability to inspire their students in the study of the Revolutionary period. The honorary is selected annually from nominations made to the Massachusetts Council for Social Studies. Frederick Graham was a member of the Massachusetts Society from 1943 until his death in 2015, a highly decorated Army Colonel who served in Europe during World War II. He was on the Standing Committee of Our Society and President General of the General Society of the Cincinnati. Mr. Graham took a great interest in education, particularly understanding the values and motivations of the revolutionary officers. The Society of the Cincinnati was founded in 1783 by and for the officers of the Continental Service in the Revolution. The first President General of the Society was George Washington, and the first Secretary General was our own Henry Knox. The Society's mission was to maintain the friendships among the officers and the states, support financially distressed fellow officers, and promote the memory and appreciation of the principles and sacrifices of these men who gave us our freedom and independence. To be a member of the Society today, you have to be a direct descendant, grandson, or grandfellow of an eligible Continental Officer. There is a Society for each of the original 13 states and one for France. You must belong to the Society to which your ancestor belonged. The Massachusetts Society of the Cincinnati is grateful to those teachers who successfully bring an appreciation and understanding of the values and contributions of our revolutionary ancestors, and they wish to encourage and support excellence in this field. So this year, the award was given to our very own Dr. Gorman Lee, Director of Social Studies for the Braintree Public Schools. And I wanted to specifically note that while accepting the award, the award, Dr. Lee stated that although my name is attached to this year's Frederick L. Graham Award, it is and will always remain as a result of the dedicated collaboration and teamwork of his teaching staff and colleagues at the Braintree Public Schools. So on behalf of the Braintree Public Schools, we are thrilled and thank Dr. Lee for everything that he has done for our social studies program, which is witnessed by all of our students K through 12 on a daily basis.
Absolutely. And why is not Dr. Lee with us this evening?
I can assure you, he is probably watching us remotely.
Well, congratulations to Dr. Lee. That is quite impressive.
Exciting news.
Yes. Any comments from the committee?
Well done.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Devon.
I think we've all witnessed the type of work that Dr. Lee brings forward. And obviously, the students know also, many different times he's come up with different programs that, shall we say, expand social studies, history, and whatnot to help improve us as a school system. So it's just the usual work that our teachers and our administrators put forth. Not surprised, but congratulate them anyway and to the rest of the administration too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devon.
In terms of other communications in your package, School Committee members, you will obviously find the approved copies of the minutes from the 1222 Policy and Education Subcommittee Meeting, as well as the approved minutes from the October 28 Finance and Ops Minutes. There's no action, it needs to be taken, but just for your information.
Madam Chair, a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
We know that there were several items from policy that were more or less tabled, and they were tabled in the spirit of allowing this reform committee to go forward there. Were those items brought forth to the new committee?
I believe you're going to hear an update on that later this evening. But as you suggested, the previous committee members had thought it was in the best interest of everybody to table those topics, and at this point, they've been picked back up.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Gifts to Schools. Right, we have quite a few. I had a couple of questions on a couple before we could, before we go into it, if we could. And maybe Mr. Cronin can address it. For Braintree High School Athletic Department, so one check transfer to BHS team accounts from the BHS Athletic Association. Is that just a transfer to Gifts to Schools? I want to clarify. Okay. So again, I am going to read all of these, if no one objects, and have them approved as one. So East Middle School, Gifts to Schools totaling $25,519.2. One deposit in the amount of $15,217.8 from community service, life touch photos, student council, and Cougar Palooza fundraising. One deposit in the amount of $10,307.24 from yearbook sales and the Ski Snowboard Club. Base Day Textiles, six checks totaling $243. Braintree High School, one check in the amount of $1,000 from Quincy Credit Union to be used for the Credit for Life. Braintree High School Athletic Department, Gifts to Schools totaling $43,548.13. An anonymous donation of an easy pup-up tent to be used at BHS athletic events. One check for $965 from the Braintree High School Boys Soccer Fundraising. Four checks totaling $300 to be used by the Braintree High School Swim and Dive Team. One deposit totaling $480 from Girls Gymnastics. And then the one check transfer of BHS team accounts from the BHS Athletic Association to the Gifts to School Braintree Athletic Account totaling $41,803.43. And then finally, Braintree High School Art Department, Gifts to Schools for $17,000 from the Braintree Art Association to be used by the Braintree High School Art Department. Can anyone speak to that one? Do we, the Braintree Art Association?
So it's actually an association that is no longer in existence. Exactly, so they were closing out all of their records.
And they gave it to unsatiable. Isn't that awesome? Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion to accept all gifts as read?
A motion.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemere, a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you all very much. Moving on, from Superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening is actually a very exciting evening for us because it does indicate the culmination of a number of different searches that we had undertaken as a district to fill some administrative openings that we had. Almost all of them, at this point, I believe are complete. There's some work to be done tonight, but we're very excited about the results of those searches. The first one I want to start with was the Director of Art. As you all know, Heidi Hurley resigned in January to go on to bigger and better things, if it was possible. We had put together a search committee that included and was chaired by Director Melanie Bennett, included Director Matt Sawtelle, Alson Mizetti from East Middle School joined that, Abigail Young, who's an art teacher in the district, and Isabella Thurston, who is a student at Braintree High School. It was not a large school of candidates, so we had a smaller search committee work for this particular job. That committee met and interviewed a number of different candidates, and they sought fit to forward one candidate to the Superintendent's Office, which I was very pleased to see because their recommendation was Julie Campesano, who has been an art teacher here in our district for the last 22 years. And if I could ask, I know she's here and this is, Julie, you want to come have a seat over here? You know, Julie presently is actually serving somewhat as an interim for Heidi Hurley in the work that she has done and does do as a director for the art department. And we had already agreed upon that from now to the end of the year. But this appointment would obviously allow that consistency to continue into next year and beyond with all Julie's experiences, the absolute support of her department. And if Heidi Hurley calls me one more time to say she thinks it would be a great choice. But it is my pleasure to introduce Julie Campesano as the Art Director for Braintree Public Schools.
Congratulations, Ms. Campesano.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Jim, for the nice introduction. I have worked here for 22 years, and I consider myself lucky to have worked with so many great teachers at South and at East, and then also within my strong art department. I consider it a privilege. I've worked under Johnnie Sundberg, who hired me, and then Joni Carroll, and most recently, Heidi Hurley. And it's been wonderful to work under their leadership. I look forward to, I consider this an honor to accept this position as I work in support of the art teachers in our department, but most importantly, the students of Braintree, as they have shown over the years and continue to do so. They are just creative and awesome kids, and it's just a really a pleasure for me to accept this position. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Bye, George.
Lots of correct, congratulations.
Thank you.
I saw you at Town Council last week. Did you want to talk about what this month is with student art?
This is Youth Art Month nationally. And the Town Council approached Jim and then me about hanging student artwork. So much like you see here, we have work that will be shown virtually and in person during their bi-monthly meetings. So right now, there's middle school work, and then we hope in April to get elementary and high school and try to keep it going. They did a really great job displaying the work and letting it shine, so it's real special. We did have one student come and watch the meeting, and maybe a few others watched virtually, but they were very excited, and that's what it's about.
Is there an end-of-the-year event as well? I talked to Madam President Erica about the fact that I was unable to get to the first meeting, but she indicated it was going to be an end-of-the-year celebration as well.
Right, so she's hoping to acknowledge all the students between now and June with some sort of certificate celebration, just to acknowledge their hard work. I know it's important for the kids to see their work outside of school. They feel good about it, so we're glad to have the opportunity.
It's been fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know the question was asked before too. In Town Hall or even at the mall, we have displayed student art work in the past. Is there going to be any kind of art exhibit, or is it going to be just at the high school?
So in more recent years, we did stick to the high school, and then COVID came. So right now, for the spring, we are working on something at the high school in May, and then having a reception and having it up for some time so that maybe folks coming to the concerts and different events can have a chance to see it. As far as the plaza, that's, we were approached, but I'm discussing with the department. Years ago, we would have a big show there, but this is something different. So we're discussing plans for the future.
Excellent. Because it's nice to have it displayed publicly, and people can come and see and appreciate it. So, well, thank you, congratulations. Excited to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
The other appointment I'd just like to announce, the individual is not here. But we also, as I think you all know, we ran a formal search to hire a permanent Ross principal. As you remember, Jennifer Fay had been in the position as an interim and had been in that position for several years. But for a number of reasons, we wanted to go through a formal process to make sure that the permanent principal at Ross was what the school community wanted and what the district wanted. So for that, we also had a search committee. Andy Delery from the high school chaired that particular committee. It included folks like Danielle Romeo, Stacy Soto, Bagheela Mitchell, Mary Sullivan, Drew Curran, Michael Teeny, and then two members of the PTO, Katie Hooper and Lisa Kirk. We had a number of candidates for that position. They again went through the interview process with all of them. They forwarded two candidates to my office with their recommendations. And I am pleased to announce that I have chosen Jennifer Fay to remain in the role as Ross principal. I think the work Jennifer has done over the last several years in terms of making that school more cohesive, more inclusive, more accepting of all of the school community has been exceptional. I think her familiarity not only with Ross, but with our district as a whole. At a tumultuous time, that steady hand, I think, is truly important. And I think Jen is in that position to use those skills to the best benefit of the students who attend Ross. And, you know, in the conversations I've had with Jen, she can clearly articulate a vision for the future of Ross, which is aligned with what we as a district have as our mission and what we would like to see for Ross as well. So for all those reasons, it is Jennifer Fay who will continue in the role as Principal at Ross Elementary School. I don't know if there's any comments.
Mr. Devon.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, yes, she's an excellent candidate. We've worked with her before. Madam Chair, you and I worked with her when we first came on. She's held many different hats here, and she has a particular perspective of being, you know, an Assistant Superintendent and going back and helping us at the Ross School. And for many years, I didn't realize she was still an interim. She does offer continuity. She knows the public there. She knows all the families. Can't be a better person, I'm really happy to hear that. She's a lovely, lovely, good person. Great to have her. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think she'll serve the students and parents well, so congratulations.
So the next two positions actually require some involvement on the part of the School Committee. We had two positions open up. One is the Director of Special Services. The other is Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Both those positions require approval in terms of selection by the School Committee. So, you know, we have both individuals here tonight. I will again just briefly describe the process. Again, we put together a search committee for the Director of Special Services. For those of you who know Jeff Rubin, Jeff Rubin actually retired like 40 years ago, but he's still coming to work. But I think at this point, he is truly ready to retire in Vermont. And the end of the school year will be his last days working for us in the capacity of Director of Special Services. So we put together a search committee. The search committee included and was chaired by Anthony Grafflow from the high school, Noreen Devlin, who works in the Special Education Office, Noreen Fetter, Dwayne Dahlback, and parent Beth Brown, who reviewed the candidates that we had. And they forwarded only one candidate to my office, and that person is here this evening. Petra Platt, if you don't mind coming up and having a seat of honor. Petra has been a member of our Special Education Department since I've been here. She started with the South Shore Collaborative. They actually took up space at one point in time in Braintree High School, and then were absorbed by the school system a number of years ago. Petra is exceptional in terms of her ability to organize and put together programming that is meaningful and good for students. She is in tune with all of the services that we as a district deliver to our students on IEPs. She's an exceptional choice, and I put her forth to this committee for your approval.
Would you like to say anything?
I would like to say that if you approve my appointment, I look forward to bringing my leadership skills, my professional expertise in education, and my commitment to the principles of special education to ensure that every student especially in Braintree Public Schools has access to their free and appropriate public education in a least restrictive environment, and that Braintree has a strong and proud reputation as an inclusion community, and I would be proud to continue to be a part of that.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Madam Chair. So I got the privilege of working under Petra for a while, so congratulations. Thank you, she's out there. I think she'd be very good at special ed. And I think it's been a job she's been waiting for for years, so I wish her the best.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. No other questions or comments?
I'd like to say something. I read through, I don't know Petra, but I've read through your resume, and it's very impressive, and I think that the students will be fortunate to have advocating for them. And I think it is a plus that you provide continuity for the department. But congratulations to you.
I would agree as well. Any other questions or comments? No, I think it's an excellent choice. Support at 100%. You're the right person for the job. Very excited that you're, I'm sure the committee will approve. I'm hopeful. And before I say congratulations, do I have a motion to approve Petra Platt as our new Director of Special Services? I have a motion by Ms. Saros. Second by Mr. Lynch, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we're not done yet. Keep rolling, yeah? So the, one of the other committees, search committees we put together was that of Assistant Superintendent. As you know, Courtney Miller decided to quit.
Shall I elaborate on this?
No, in all seriousness, for all the right reasons, Courtney, you know, chose not to continue to pursue that role. And so we put together a search committee for a permanent replacement for the Assistant Superintendent. That search committee was chaired by Courtney Miller. It included teachers Karen Bejo, Madam Chair, Ms. Heager was on the search committee, John Shan from East Middle School, Hillary Caponella from the high school, Ryan Punteri, Kate Fallon, Dr. Betsy Clifford, Shannon Umbro, Michelle Lockton, Nancy Moynihan, and apparent Jennifer Lynn from Morrison were all members of that search committee. There were a good number of candidates for this particular position who were all interviewed by the search committee. And the search committee sought fit to forward only one candidate to the Superintendent's Office. That candidate is here this evening. Nora, please, head to seat. Nora Vernaza is the choice of the search committee. I have met with Nora. I concur that I think she would be an excellent candidate. Nora is currently the head of school at Tech Boston Academy, where she has done a tremendous amount of work around curriculum, but also all the other elements that an Assistant Superintendent will come in contact with during their day. Particularly impressed by her enthusiasm, her passion for this type of work. You know, and the people I spoke to who have worked with Nora gave rousing endorsements of her abilities and commitment to the job. So this evening, I welcome Nora to visit with you folks for a couple of minutes because she would be my recommendation for Assistant Superintendent.
I also had the pleasure of serving on the search committee, so I got a chance to meet Nora. And I know that the search committee enthusiastically moved her forward to the Superintendent. And I also know the mayor is late this evening. He's supposed to be joining us shortly, but I know that you also met with the mayor, and he also had glowing comments as well. So you passed all of the...
Our rebuttal.
That's okay. We just put Nora on the hot seat, please. And I know you had met with her, so I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to share as well.
Had a great interview. Think she's a great candidate and supportive. Really appreciate it.
Want to give her a chance to tell what she thinks?
I would like you to.
Sure. Hi, everyone. So my name's Nora Vernaza. Obviously, I've been in Boston Public Schools for over 20 years and have been a school leader for 10. And I started this process just with some reflections about my own skills and what I thought I could bring to a district and thinking more about systematic work and not just at one school. And I did a lot of research on Braintree before the interview, and there were just so much, so many opportunities, so much excitement. I love the mission. I love the strategic plan. Jim and I have met multiple times now, but our vision is so aligned and our philosophy on education. And as I said in the interview, I am really eager to be in a smaller community and to really be able to know the students, the families, the schools, and to be able to sort of wrap myself around all of it and to really embrace the community that is so tight, which I love. And just really excited to be here.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Do the chair.
It's ours.
We're sad to see you go, but we definitely look forward to it.
She's not going, I need her.
Changing positions, shifting, shifting, but it'll be nice to work with you. Look forward to it.
Any other comments?
Do the chair. Yes, I wanted to say welcome and reiterate what Carla said. And you have some big shoes to fill.
I know.
Will miss Courtney, but she's not leaving us, so that's good news. Thank you.
I've already asked if I can shadow her many times.
Anything else? Any others? We're so quiet, proud tonight.
That's right.
Yeah, we're just, we know that Mr. Lee has good decision powers. And yeah, exactly. Oh, yes.
Stay with that.
I stand by the search committees. They truly work, you know, and having representation from administration, teachers, parents, you know, across the board, you know, they've worked every time as far as I'm concerned. So, so again, may I have a motion then to appoint Nora as our new Assistant Superintendent? I have a motion by Ms. Saros and a second by Ms. Cobblemere. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous, congratulations. Welcome, welcome to Braintree.
Yeah, I'm excited, thank you.
All right, moving on to administrative updates.
All right. Short timer. Courtney Miller.
If Ms. Campesano, Ms. Petra, or Dr. Petra would like to leave, or, you know, you're welcome to leave. If you want to stay for the meeting, stay for the meeting, but it's up to you.
Run, save yourself.
You're welcome to stay.
That's my inside voice.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Lee.
I'm going to turn it right back over to Ms. Miller.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Lee. We wanted to first update the committee about summer academic programming. While we're still in somewhat of the early stages, we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we are excited to be offering both our extended school year programming for our students in the special ed department as well as our Sparks program. So Sparks being our summer program about reaching kids. Right now, we are in the planning phases for all of those programs in terms of securing staff, thinking about specific dates and times for the Spark program in particular, the particular course offerings that we'll be offering to all students this summer. One announcement we'd like to make publicly is that our Sparks program and all of the ESY programs associated with Sparks will actually be operating out of East Middle School this summer. So we're very excited that now that all of the punchless items are done on East Middle School, et cetera, that building will be up and open for our Sparks program. And again, the students associated with ESY going to Sparks this summer. And then for the remaining ESY programs, like we have for a number of years now, they will be operating out of Braintree High School. So again, we're still in the early planning phases of both of those programs, securing staff, and soon, parents and family members will receive information about those two programs.
Is this the normal timeline? Is this usually March for summer programs?
Yes, this is definitely when we start thinking about securing staff just to make sure that summer plans are not taking precedent over the programs that we're running in Braintree. So we are definitely on par. We actually have Julianne Quintilliani, who has been named the coordinator for the ESY program. So while she's working alongside all of our special ed administrators and all of our special ed staff in terms of identifying students, we are going to have a go-to person this summer who is really just coordinating all of those programs, K through 12. So we're really lucky to have her on board. And Marilyn Connell, who has been running our Sparks program for a number of years now, will be returning.
Continuing?
It's continuing.
And Sparks will be at East, which is air-conditioned.
Right. Very exciting.
Very nice.
Yes.
It's exciting. Any other administrative updates?
I will continue to go. And I also wanted to update the committee about our Credit for Life Fair program. So I'm thrilled to announce that after not being able to run the Credit for Life Fair for two years in a row, we're actually going to be running it for the entire senior class this year. It's actually taking place next Thursday on March 17th. We actually, I'm not sure if anybody in the room remembers, but we had been planning to run the Credit for Life Fair for the entire senior class in March of 2020. We got, as far as securing all of our buses and students were signed up for all of their careers and everything was printed and organized, and then, of course, the pandemic hit. So we did have to shut down schools one week before we were going to be running that program. This will end up being the ninth annual fair. So again, back in 2020, that would have been the ninth fair, and it would have been the first time that we were running the fair for the entire senior class. So for the first eight years, I give full credit to Joe Baimosto, our business teacher at Braintree High School, who brought the program to the school district. And at the time, any seniors who were enrolled in a business elective course during their senior year had the opportunity to go to the fair. We slowly started expanding that around years seven and eight to be the seniors who were enrolled in business electives and also seniors who were enrolled in one of our newer statistics college-level course. And then again, 2020 was supposed to be the vision of having the entire senior class. So we're excited to say that 2022, we are inviting the entire senior class. The programming for the day will start with a senior breakfast on campus. So students will come into school at the normal time. We'll have a nice hour-long breakfast just for the seniors and talk a little bit about the logistics for the day. We're then going to put all the students on a bus and go over to the trial room in Quincy, which is where Braintree High School has had their fair for every single year that it has run. Students will go through 15 different booths and pretend like they are 25-year-old adults managing their finances. So the prep work for students and the programming in general, and this is a national initiative, the Credit for Life Fair, is that... is that students select what career they think that they want to have as an adult. We give them a budgeting spending plan in terms of what their monthly income will be, take out those taxes, take out some other recurring expenses. It's a little bit of a roll of the dice for each of the careers in terms of how much credit card debt you might have and how much debt you might have in terms of your student loans. So it's supposed to give a realistic number to what you actually have to live off of each month. Students then take that number and go around and visit a variety of booths, things like clothing, participating in community service, securing furniture, health plans, housing, insurance, job search, nutrition, a whole bunch of different items that would go into a typical budgeting season. So at the end, the plan is to be not in the red, but successfully living on your allotted salary throughout the way. And then students will return to Braintree High School for a senior lunch. And then that happens to be Spirit Week over at Braintree High School. So the seniors will then go to a pep rally to finish out the day. So that was a very nice coincidence because we didn't know that when we were planning the date of March 17. If I may, I'd like to thank all of the community volunteers that are going to be joining us at the fair this year. So we have Milton's, who will be running our clothing booth. We have great support from the Braintree Rotary, who will be running a number of booths, including the community service. We have partnered with South Shore Bank, who again will be running a number of our booths. Quincy College will be joining us. Liberty Bay Credit Union will be running a number of our booths and actually hosting our booth captain luncheon, which is happening tomorrow, just making sure that all of the adults that are running the booths know what they're doing. We have Maloney Properties joining us for the first time this year. We have support from the Fair Public Library, Quincy Credit Union, Voya, and Toyota of Braintree, along with some of our own staff, which we have pulled for some of our booths to cover this year. So we're very excited about the event, the fact that we're finally expanding it to the whole senior class and giving all 423, I believe, seniors that experience to really think about what it means to be financially sound and make some decisions in a controlled environment before they actually have to do it for real.
Excellent. I had the privilege years ago of being able to attend, watching it in action, and it was pretty amazing. It was eye-opening to quite a few of the students when they ran out of money quite quickly.
Full eye-opener.
Where they wanted to live, but what kind of car they wanted to buy and those kinds of things. So and I'm so excited that it's been opened up to all students because I know at the time, it was just business students at the time. And I know this has been something, my daughter took the finance class in high school. And I think ideally, every student should take the finance class in high school. So this is a great opportunity for them at least to have a taste of it because it's critical. So. Did they talk about credit score at all?
Yes, credit score is rolled in there. Again, that's sort of the roll of the dice. So unfortunately, they're dealt whatever hand they're dealt when they get their sheets on March 17th on the morning. But they do talk about credit score, and there's a whole booth dedicated to credit counseling. So a slot apart from the 15 booths that they have to travel to, they can always go to credit counseling to help balance, think about some other financial decisions that they could make.
And how many hours do they actually have to drill room?
They're there for two hours.
Hours, okay.
We are really hopeful that's going to be enough.
I'll make this a class. 400 kids?
Yes, right around 400.
Excellent. That's very exciting. Any questions?
Is there a thought process towards expanding this? Two hours to learn all your finances? I mean, I think it's vitally important that these kids get out there. Look, with the nuclear family and all the things that go on there, sometimes people have a touchy problem speaking about money plainly to their children. Sometimes it's a generational thing, sometimes it's a cultural thing. But the damage it does, I mean, I remember, you know, "Hey Dad, I'm going to graduate and go to college." You shook my hand and said, "Start earning money. Good luck." Now, it took me two years to start college because I had to save the money. So and it's that whole, "I'm going to drive a Lamborghini." No, no, you're not. And the realities of what rent is, you know, are you living above or below your means? All the things that go with that. Two hours? Can we look to us like lengthening that to like be a couple of days? Or have one weekend be the okay discovery part? Give them a couple of months and then say, "Hey, do your homework on this." And give them something at the end, perhaps some type of award for the first, second, third person as far as how they do their finances. Because as a young person, if you get yourself in the wrong type of debt, it can truly be earth-shattering. We see with student loans and things like that. I think a lot of people, you know, they get into a certain major and say, you know, this interpretive dance class is going to pay my bills. And I'm not, I picked that out. I mean, I was a business person. I thought I was going to go out and be a millionaire. I'm still looking for that first million. But you look and go, it's that important. And I think two hours, it's a good start. Can we lengthen this, Madam Chair?
I think when you look at it, it's how it's evolved over time. You know, if you go back to its beginnings, it really was a very small population of kids who even participated. It is completely pulled off through the generosity of the community. It is business owners who give up their time and they come in. You know, it's amazing to see all the different people in town who show up to help these kids understand it. And so to go from a very small group of seniors who were taking particular classes to the entire senior class, that in itself is the continued evolution that you're discussing. COVID didn't help, right? Moving in a certain direction and then everything was derailed. So yeah, I think as we continue to move forward and build off the success of this year, we can look at doing more. But I, one would just point out, look at the work that's been done thus far and then look at the generosity of the town that made it possible because I think those are two very big pieces of it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I may as well, so I had mentioned that it's really a national program, and it actually comes with a number of lesson plans that teachers are implementing in terms of gearing students up for that experience. So where it has lived mainly in the business elective courses, they do a lot of projects leading up to the event. So the actual fair itself is really the culminating experience. When we expanded to the full senior class, we've now housed it really in the math department, which is also where the business department lives. And so while I would say the programming is not completely fleshed out at this point, we do have plans to make sure that those lessons are implemented in our math courses. Because to your point, there's certainly a lot that we can be teaching students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative updates?
The last one is very brief. Just as you all know, when we returned from vacation on February 28th, it was mask optional in the school system. Then beginning on Tuesday, March 1st, it was mask optional on buses. That one-day delay was really to allow us to get to the bus drivers, you know, who everybody was on vacation. When they decided to make this announcement that we were going to remove that requirement on school buses. But you know, since then, there've been no issues throughout the school system in terms of implementing this non-policy and having kids make the selection and families make the selection between either wearing masks or not. I've been in a multitude of schools. There are absolutely students and staff who wear masks. There are probably a majority in every single site that do not. But as far as the environment thus far, it seems to be incredibly positive. And I think a great step for everybody as we move forward. So just bring it up to speed.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Moving on to from the school committees, school committee student representative update.
I was actually going to touch upon masks. It's like feeling good now, like a sense of normalcy to like not see everyone in masks. And some people do still wear the mask, which is like obviously their choice. But it is good now that like, wouldn't think there's really difference like being able to see your teacher's face. But like, it really does. Like, it feels much better. So I just wanted to say like, having this option to be able to wear a mask or to not, I think it's really beneficial for staff and students.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about Stand Up Week, which is occurring next week. And it's we introducing the pillars that VHS demonstrates to their students. Stand Up stands for Strength, Truth, Acceptance, Nonviolence, Diversity, Unity, and Positivity. And I think this is a great initiative to reconfirm what VHS stands for and how to treat every student equally.
Anything to share, William?
I can reiterate Jack's point. I'm a person of student body, so I'm part of the planning committee for Stand Up Week. And I think it's just really important overall to make sure that all students in the high school feel valued and they feel kind of accepted into the student body as a whole. Some of the days, including Monday, which is bellow for disability awareness as color of inclusion, is just to make sure that all people and all students in the school just feel like that's one student body. Other days include Colors of Your Country on Tuesday, which is for students to celebrate their cultural heritage. On Wednesday, we have Red and Rainbow Day, which is to celebrate students in the LGBTQ+ community. And then on Thursday, which is going to be the day of our pep rally and the seniors are going to be returning from the Credit for Life program. It's Pink Day, just to celebrate kindness and inclusion. And we kind of just make sure that all students treat each other with respect and make sure that everyone always feels valued in their community.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Thank you. Good work. Very good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Braintree High School update.
I am so excited. Make a chorus. It's just automatic.
I'll take it as a compliment. Yeah, at this point, you know, we've finished the work at the high school and there's a number of different zones. And as you know, chair on the finance committee, that we're moving forward with the plan for consolidation of meetings. And you know, obviously, you guys will probably speak about that again and eventually it'll be up before the committee. And on another note, as far as COVID, we're seeing the lowest numbers since July. I'll say that we've seen some days where we've had two cases, some nine cases, but our numbers definitely have diminished, which is very fortunate. And I'm really glad that you guys get to see each other's faces now, you know? It's been a long time, and I think it's nice for us to be moving in that direction. So good for you guys.
Thank you, make a chorus. Moving on to Policy and Education Subcommittee update.
So the Policy and Education Subcommittee met on February 28th. And I'd like to thank my fellow Subcommittee members, Matt Lynch and Kelly Cobblemeier, for electing me Chair of the Subcommittee. We considered several things. We voted unanimously to move two items to the full school committee. First was to allow remote participation in school committee meetings. And this would give residents joining remotely an opportunity to participate in the public comment section of the meetings. So I would like to ask at this time for a motion to allow remote participation for public comment.
Salute. Second.
Saros, I mean, sorry, Ms. Cobblemeier?
Yeah, I want you to make a motion to allow remote participation for public comment for school committee meetings.
We have a motion by Ms. Cobblemeier and a second by Mr. Devin.
No, it's Mr. Lynch.
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Lynch, sorry. Everybody was kind of jumped in on that one, which is great. It's very exciting. So with that, do we, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. So starting at our next meeting, whether or not you are physically here at the meeting or not, you can remotely participate in the public comment section of our meetings. Want to contribute, Ms. Toughness?
Yes, and so the second item that we are moving to the full committee today is the public comment policy that was reviewed. And some amendments were suggested, including moving the public comment period to the beginning of each meeting. That would give, giving each speaker two minutes to address items on the agenda. And copies of the agenda would be, of course, posted 48 hours prior to the meeting. And in other matters, consideration of the field temperature policy was tabled until the next meeting. Mr. Lee presented the vacation survey results, which the previous Policy and Education Subcommittee looked at it on December 2nd. The present Subcommittee voted unanimously to table the changes to vacations indefinitely. And Ms. Miller shared the results of the homework survey that was sent to parents and described the work being done by the curriculum board to examine the current policies at the elementary, middle, and high school level. The updated policies will be presented to the Policy and Education Subcommittee to review once the curriculum board's work is complete. So the next meeting will be on March 17th at 6:00 PM.
Are there any questions from Ms. Toughness about the work with Mr. Devin?
Please. First of all, the first, the last thing we just did that is kind of out of order, wasn't on our, shall we say, itineraries, our agendas.
The motion?
Public comment, whatnot. It constitutes the same night action. I didn't see that anyone raised their hand. I just didn't see it on here. Now, as far as these things, it doesn't make sense to me in that, okay, you want people to speak a public comment on something that's on the agenda, yet you want it in the very beginning. How do they construct intelligent questions before the things even discussed by us? It doesn't make sense, for one.
It's public comment.
Right.
So they can speak about anything that's on the agenda.
Right.
At the beginning of the meeting, and perhaps we can cover it later in the meeting. Perhaps if it's something specific to the agenda. Again, public comment is not back and forth.
No, it's not, but.
They can make a comment.
Yes, Madam Chair. What I'm trying to put forth is, we as a school committee have to be accessible to the people. I still have my cellphone up on our website. I believe that I'm supposed to be accessible 24/7. It's part of the job. Well, public comment is one of those venues in which they get to be able to access us. No, it's not give and take. But how are they supposed to intelligently have an opinion on something we haven't discussed yet? It doesn't make sense to me. And I believe we used to have it 72 hours, not 48. We used to get the agenda out on a Friday, not a Saturday.
Used to get the agenda out on a Thursday.
Well, okay, you kind of.
In the packet? Are you talking about the packet or are you talking about the agenda?
Agenda will be to the people of Braintree.
Agenda goes out on Thursdays, 48 hours before.
To the, to the public?
Correct.
Okay, so why are we having, having it 48 hours?
It is 48 hours. Business.
The weekend day.
Business days? All right, I stand corrected. Okay, I'm just, my whole point is about accessibility to the people. If it's just a situation where all they're going to do is write us emails and not have any type of a comment section, I think it's vitally important that people are allowed to have their say, and this is one of the ways.
So let me clarify. So you think that they should still be at the end of the meeting?
Yes. Like intelligently comment about what transpired.
At the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's going to be consistent towards what's on that agenda. It's almost like guesswork.
I understand your point. I understand your point, yeah. Not all public comment necessarily is, needs us to have the meeting before they can, as you say, intelligently comment. I'm sure people have ideas or have things that they want to come and discuss prior to our conversation. So maybe it potentially influenced what we're going to talk about or what, how we're going to vote later in the meeting. If someone were to come for public comment and had a comment that perhaps we didn't think of, or perhaps it might be something that we wanted to take into consideration.
We, that the avenue is email.
Madam Chair, I think that many times a parent or a resident has something that they, that they want to discuss relative to the agenda. This allows them, by having it at the beginning of the meeting, they don't have to sit through an hour and a half of things that are not relative to the topic that they're interested in. Many of the people that are commenting are parents with young families. And it's difficult to attend a long evening meeting. So that, that is one of the reasons that it would be moved to the beginning of the school committee meeting. So they do not have to, do not have to stay online or through the entire, the entire lengthy meeting. So I think there are certainly, I understand what you're saying about people addressing things that happened in the meeting. But I suspect that many times when there's a, someone is planning to comment, they have given some thought to what they want to address before the meeting. So I'm, and this is, there is discretion of the chair to extend public comment. If, so if there's some. If, so if there's something that's very controversial or something that, that there is, the chair has discretion to extend the public comment period and we could certainly make a motion to change to the end of the meeting if necessary.
That should be under the discretion of the chair. I think that's what happened before a few times.
Yes.
I just don't want, I mean, the whole mind reading thing as far as what happens and what transpires. I hear your point. And there are some people with young children. I can see where there's some importance there. But then there are certain situations in which you do have to extend public comment beyond ten minutes because we do have something that people want to speak to. I went to Mac College with it. I mean, I probably did several meetings where I was over an hour with public comment and allowed everyone to speak. We gave them three minutes. Good choice, bad choice. Hey, I'm kind of good with the whole two minutes. But you look and say, you know, we want people to have access to us and be able to speak to some of these things intelligently after we vetted them before this group. And it's going to change potentially the questions we get. It might, shall we say, cut down on some of the, you know, questions that you get that don't make sense based on what we're thinking versus what they think, how they think the mechanism works. So I believe that the chair should, shall we say, in administration dictate what the rules of our accessibility are. I just want that spirit of accessibility to still be there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just to quickly expand on what Ms. Toughy said, but I don't think we're, we're limiting anybody's public comment. We're allowing them to speak maybe before we even discuss things. Because sometimes we've had complaints of people saying, well, you didn't, you know, we didn't get to comment and you voted on something without doing it. So sometimes doing the comment section ahead will alleviate that problem. And I think that's the way of thinking that we were thinking is letting people say peace before we look like we're voting without taking their comments into consideration. And as we all know, we get numerous emails from people. So people have accessibility to us morning, noon, and night. And, you know, I think that's where we can give feedback and they get maybe responses to our comments where here they're just making a comment where in an email, we can respond to their concerns. So I think, you know, both, I think we're fairly accessible, but I mean, I understand what you're saying. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lemire. Any other comments? Anything you want to add, Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, I mean, they've both said it. They kind of, I think what our reasoning was, is especially kind of the accessibility for public comment. If we do it at, say, six thirty every night, everyone knows it's six thirty. But sometimes a meeting could run to public comments not till eight or it's at seven thirty and people are running around. But I do get what you're saying, that the agenda is after. But as you're saying, most people come here kind of knowing what they're going to say and then we can kind of talk about it. So I think it was just to be like, all right, every night, six thirty, public comments first. So every parent that wanted to get their voice in can know that every school meeting, first thing, we can get in there and then they can go about their day because most people are busy.
That's a good point because again, again, at the end of the meeting, our end of the meeting fluctuates depending on how big, how big the agenda is or how long it takes us to get through it. So I would agree with the doing it first. Did you have another comment, Mr. Devon?
I can be in support of this. As long as the chair, we may have something that's very, shall we say, charged and it, they have their comments and then something gets charged and it takes on a life of itself. You as the chairperson are going to have to allow those people to speak to that thing, even though it's not on the agenda that night. They should have the ability to go back on the last agenda and say, this was after public comment and the, the information and or the subject matter changed. They should have the ability to comment on that. Because you can look and shut them down, say, it's not on the agenda.
I get you.
So, Madam Chair.
If that's respected, you have my vote.
So we had actually discussed a little bit too about how, I mean, sometimes, I mean, I think when they have one person for one comment, right? Some nights, there's nothing, right? Most meetings go like that. But then you'll have that hard charge item where we know in advance where if it's up to the chair discretion to be like, hey, we're sending, we know it's a big thing, we're sending it of this a lot of time at the end. We put it out in advance. We know there's a lot of emails, right? We'd know before. So she would have the discretion to actually make that decision to extend it because obviously that comes around what, I don't know, you guys. But we kind of have a discretion where we know what's coming, right? Because we have those emails. We see what, what they're saying. So we could kind of get ahead of that.
Fair enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Devon. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Is there somewhere in here that needs to be amended or is this, you already have that it's up to the discretion of the chair?
The, that is in, that is in, let me just double check. It's on number one.
It's on number one.
Yep.
Probably very long for a sentence.
Extend a period of ten minutes at the beginning of the meeting, which may be extended at the discretion of the presiding chair.
Okay, but again, the beginning of the meeting. If we're taking only public comment at the beginning of the meeting and the agenda goes through, to Mr. Devon's point, he was suggesting at the next meeting, someone could speak about something that we did at the previous meeting, even if it's not on that agenda.
As long as they're being respectful with all the rules that we put forth, yes.
All right, well, this is, that's something that the Subcommittee can take back.
Yep.
Policy and Education Subcommittee.
We can look at that on the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth. And this is only first reading tonight. So this is the first time that most of us have seen this besides the members of the Subcommittee. So if anybody else has any other comments, you know, please reach out to the members of the, to the superintendent and we'll, we will take this up at our next meeting. Thank you to members of the Policy and Education Subcommittee for your work.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Finance and Operations Subcommittee. I am the chair of that committee. We met on the third. And Chief of Staff Taub did a presentation, a proposal to establish a centralized maintenance department. The Director of the DPW and Facilities were both there, Jim Ossinol and Mike McCordy, among others, to present. So we had quite a, quite a good discussion, very good presentation. We had a lot of questions once they left. So we, at the end of the conversation, we told Chief of Staff Taub that we would get back to her with additional questions. And we are meeting again on the seventeenth. We will take it up again then. And hopefully we'll be able to resolve our questions then. Before we bring it, before we can make any kind of recommendation from the Finance and Operations to the full committee. So that's where we stand with that. And then the budget, we did a preliminary FY twenty-three draft again of the maintenance of effort. We discussed the impact to the budget of enrollment. We talked about some priorities. We are meeting regularly with the mayor to discuss budget. So right now it is a very fluid process. So we will continue to meet and, and discuss that as well. Our next meeting is also on the seventeenth at five o'clock here, if anybody's interested. And are there any other questions or comments from other members, Ms. Toughy or Mr. Lynch, Finance and Operations? Any other comments or anything else you want to add?
No, I think to thank the mayor's office for sending Ms. Taub and, and people representing the DPW to present to us. And we look forward to hearing more answers to, to those questions that we had.
Thank you, Ms. Toughy. That is all for the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. At this point, we are into public comment. I have one sign up and then more than one person that would like to speak. No? Mike Jackson.
Good evening to the school committee members in the Braintree community. My name is Mike Jackson. I've zided in Braintree for over twelve years. I currently have two children in the school system. Very grateful to the teachers and administration. They've done such a positive impact on them and on my family. Also this evening, I need to publicly comment on disturbing issues that I've become aware of within our schools. Both of my children, as well as our parents, other parents in the community, have reported the use of racial epithets and the use of so-called Nazi salutes by students during school hours. And looking into these matters, I found that our teachers and administration either lack the resources or support to deal with these issues effectively in real time. While I'm sure that they are handling these issues as best as possible, I know that we have missed teachable moments for our students. I've been informed even so that once a student enters middle school, it may be too late to teach right and wrong concerning the use of these words and gestures. I disagree wholeheartedly. I have spoken with the teacher, principal, superintendently, and exchanged emails and a call with school committee members. I've been made aware of many resources and trainings that are available to the administration. Yet this is still happening in the schools without more being done. What we are doing is not working. I do not expect this committee to solve racial issues in our country, state, or town. But I am asking for this committee to closely review how our school system is handling these types of issues, how and when we are teaching the history and understanding of these offensive words and gestures, and how we as a school community will ensure that all are truly welcome. As a resident and a human resources professional with over twenty-five years of experience, I've offered my assistance in getting more resources to all involved. And I make this offer again to the school committee. I will not drop this issue of concern. And I will now look to the community for more support in teaching our students and in supporting our teachers and administrators. I appreciate your time and I look forward to a formal response to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Is there any public comment, any announcements from any members of the school committee? Our next meeting, we had set tentative dates of the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. We will not be holding meetings on those dates. Our next meeting will be March twenty-first. Again, there will be no meeting on the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. Okay, and with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon, second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You have to be real called.
I know, thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Toughy?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Mayor, of course.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemire?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned.